Paul Stedt over there? Okay, good evening everyone. This is the Truro Planning Board. Of course I put the papers right on top of the floor. It is now Wednesday, August 22nd, 6:07 PM, at the Community Center in Truro, at 7 Standish Way. And this is a meeting, and a public hearing, continued public hearing, for the Truro Planning Board. My name is Stephen Solak. I am the acting Chair of the Board. And the Board will introduce themselves, starting from that far side over there. Mike Roderick, Councilman Bruce Foley, and we have Katie, what was her last name?
Lockman.
Katie Lockman, from KP or Red KP.
From KP Lockman, Councilwoman.
That's right. She's going to help us through this.
Paul Kiernan.
Karen Tosh.
Peter Henry.
Alright, thank you. We do say at the beginning of our meeting for public comment, and the public comment is limited to a specific amount of time, something around four or five minutes. If anyone has something they wish put on a future agenda, this would be your time to speak about that. If no one has anything to say at the moment, then we will reopen our public hearing for the draft marijuana bylaw. And I'll read this into the record. "Planning Board to Hold Public Hearing on Proposed Amendments to the Town of Truro on Bylaw for Purposes of Regulating Medical and Adult Use Recreational Marijuana Establishments Within the Town, Including Establishments for the Cultivation, Processing, Testing, Product Manufacturing, Retail Sale, and Transportation of Marijuana. Uses Shall be Limited to Certain Zoning Districts and Subject to Issuance of a Special Permit and Site Plan Review." The complete text of the proposed amendments are on file with the Truro Town Clerk of Truro Town Hall, 24 Town Hall Road, and are available for viewing. There are no normal business hours, 8 to 4 PM, Monday through Friday. And you can also find them on the town website, Okay, so, we begin. We do have a slide presentation. We do have a proposed bylaw. And we have had some discussion on it. And this is to continue that discussion. A lot of members of this Board, a lot of people in the Craft Cooperative, have had some input to help us find ways to compromise and protect Truro at the same time, while allowing this town to begin a new kind of business in Truro. So, let me consider how we shall start. We would start maybe with the slide presentation. And we'll go through what is in our draft bylaw and what we're confronted with. I have personally felt sometimes overwhelmed by the amount of different things this actually encompasses. So please bear with us. And we'll try to work through as many of these points and allow everyone to speak on them as the time may be. So this is our public hearing. And the basic structure for tonight is the basic information, major topics for the bylaw review. And then we'll have a discussion, comments, and suggestions. So the purpose is to establish zoning regulations that provide for the time, place, and manner of marijuana establishments and locations suitable for such uses. And we wish to minimize the adverse impacts on adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, schools, playgrounds, and other sensitive locations. By regulating the sighting, design, placement, and security of such uses, we hope to maintain the residential and rural character of Truro. So let's see. There was a vote back in 2016 where this town, along with several others, approved the legalization of marijuana. Not realizing what that actually puts in front of you, it sounds like a great idea at the time. Having some knowledge of Truro and its history, I wouldn't have seen a problem with it either. But then you have to actually come down to terms with, what does that mean? So there was another meeting, which we had hoped to put a moratorium on the, to establish a moratorium to, just to buy some time so the town could catch up and provide bylaws without a time pressure on the Board. Because I don't think we're actually known for moving very fast. So I agree that the moratorium would be a good idea. But that was tabled. And so on June 21st, 2018, the organization that is now known as the Cannabis Control Commission granted the state's first recreational marijuana business license to Syrah Naturals Incorporated and Milk. I'm not going to try to editorialize on these slides, but I have, you know, I have my own opinion about things. And sometimes they come out. So I apologize if it seems like it's informational and it's just opinion. But I will try to go around all of these slides as they are written. Current regulations, which is now the Cannabis Control Commission, is the state regulatory board. So they have drafted it and accepted, and they are the ruling board for all of those uses that I just described before, which would be the growing, the manufacturing, the retail sales, the testing, and the transportation. Towns, number two, may establish bylaws regulating the time, place, and manner for operation of commercial marijuana establishments, provided such bylaws are not in conflict with the regulations established by the CCC. So each, and then there's this other, this other part to it, which we haven't had time to really discuss yet, but hopefully we'll get to. Each marijuana establishment must have a host community agreement with the Town of Truro. That's actually outside of what we're trying to do tonight. What we're trying to do is establish bylaws that the town can use to regulate all of the businesses and the growing in Truro. And that is our goal, to submit a new zoning bylaw at full town meeting scheduled for September 26th, 2018. And that is relatively close. So feels like just over a month away. Alright, are we up to contents? I hope these slides match.
They do.
Good. At the full town meeting. "The Truro Can Pass Zoning Bylaws and Other Time, Place, and Manner Regulations That Regulate Marijuana Businesses, Provided the Regulations Are Not Unreasonably Impractical." Stress that because that's part of, an important factor that we have to consider with the bylaws that we create. So define that, unreasonably impractical. It's defined as, "Subject licensees to unreasonable risk will require such a high investment of money, time, or other asset that a reasonably prudent businessperson would not engage in the business enterprise." The bylaw can specify what parts of town are available for the different types of commercial marijuana establishments. And those examples are cultivation, processing, retail, transportation. The bylaw could regulate the marijuana industry to fit Truro's needs and town character. Then you'd have to wonder what Truro's character actually is at some point. If you're going to have everybody, well, it's opinion, I apologize. If the bylaw fails, so marijuana establishments would be allowed to operate in Truro, subject to existing zoning. For example, marijuana retail treated the same as other retail uses. Marijuana cultivation allowed in the same area as other agricultural uses. Marijuana establishments would still be subject to licensing and regulatory requirements imposed by the Cannabis Control Commission for state licensure. The host community agreement is required between town and each business before they can get a license from the Cannabis Control Commission. The law, that Truro would lose the ability to have specific control over where each of the different types of marijuana establishments could locate. And the types of local regulations that it could apply to these specific uses. So, again, marijuana establishments can include, and this is where, you know, when we, when we first voted to legalize marijuana, this is what no one really took into account. This is what it included, which is cultivation sites, processing, product manufacturing, transporters, research facilities and testing laboratories, retail recreational, and medical marijuana dispensaries. I think that's far more than most people assumed would be put into their town by saying, yes, we don't want to give marijuana to people. That's also an opinion by me. Important definitions. Craft marijuana cultivator, cooperative, and cannabis. So these are two terms that we haven't had to deal with until recently. I will read this entire article. Number one, craft marijuana cultivator cooperative. "The marijuana cultivator comprised of residents of the Commonwealth..." I will assume that's...
Um, so in order, can you hold up for a minute just because the slides have caught up to you?
I got ahead of it just a little.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Because the curtain's obscuring a little bit.
Well, I know, because I didn't want to do my honors. I'll go get the sunglasses. Sorry about that. You can see that half of the David lighting? Go back, one, go back, one. So we got to the, uh... Important definitions?
Yep.
Okay, so number one, that's the next slide after that. Craft marijuana cultivator cooperative. All there?
Not yet.
There you are, alright. See, "The marijuana cultivator comprised of residents of the Commonwealth", I imagine that would be the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, "organized as a limited liability company or limited liability partnership under the laws of the Commonwealth, or an appropriate business structure as determined by the commission", "is licensed to cultivate, obtain, manufacture, process, package, and brand marijuana and marijuana products to deliver marijuana to marijuana establishments, but not to consumers." So that would not include retail sales. "A craft marijuana cultivator cooperative is a type of marijuana cultivator that also has authority to process and manufacture marijuana products under a single license from the Cannabis Control Commission, and may have its operations spread across multiple locations." That is the definition of our cooperative. Cannabis, new term that we haven't really used very often until now. "Total square footage of the area and/or buildings includes all areas that will contain mature plants at any point in time, calculated in square feet and measured using clearly identifiable boundaries." It may be non-contiguous, but each unique area included in the total canopy calculations shall be separated by an identifiable boundary, which include, but are not limited to interior walls, shelves, greenhouse walls, hoophouse walls, garden benches, hedge rows, fencing, garden beds, or garden plots. "If mature plants are being cultivated using a shelving system", which means that one plant would be on a lower shelf, and more plants would be on a shelf above, "the surface area of each level shall be included in the total canopy calculation." "The Cannabis Control Commission grants licenses for cannabis sizes from 5,000 square feet to 100,000 square feet." Am I going too fast?
No.
No.
Okay. Because some of that actually is a lot of information, which is so interesting. Aspects of marijuana establishments in Truro that a bylaw can regulate or could regulate. Number one, where establishments can be located. For example, the residential district and/or specific business districts. Number two, requirements for special permits and/or site plan review. Number three, none of marijuana business licenses allowed townwide and/or per district. Number four, the type and size of new construction for businesses. Number five, hours of operation for retail businesses. Number six, signage allowed for businesses. Number seven, security plans. Number eight, traffic studies, vehicle density and circulation plans. And number nine, resource plans for waste disposal, use of energy, and water. It almost seems like the same slide. Aspects of marijuana cultivation. So I understand the difference. The previous slide was marijuana establishments. This is the cultivation, this is the growing, and this is what a bylaw could regulate. And the cultivation, number one, indoor or outdoor cultivation, or both. Number two, growing acreage, including maximum amount of growing acreage for licensee. The proportion of growing acreage to the lot size, setbacks from abutting properties and/or certain institutions, for example, schools. I think schools might be it at the moment. Number three, security, including fencing to prevent unauthorized access. And this is required by state regulations. And security lighting at night. Number four, grow lights. Number five, noxious odor controls. Number six, the type and size of enclosed structures for growing. And those would be included, and maybe not limited to, greenhouses, pre-fabricated or pre-engineered structures, such as steel containers, barns, and so on. A resource plan for the use of energy, water, and waste disposal. Next slide, major topics for bylaw review. Where each type of marijuana business would be allowed. The number of each type of establishment that would be allowed. The required distance from schools and possibly other institutions. The space allowed for cultivation, total square footage, total number of parcels. The structure, the size and square feet, the height, the material, or the greenhouses. And then we have major topics, continued. Special permit process and conditions, security fencing, lighting, resource impact and plan, water, power, and waste. And I think there's about 30 more slides, so we're almost through. So here we have the zoning district map again. Rather difficult to see. Well, you can sort of see it. Let me see what the, before you move to the next slide. Now, okay. Well, that's pretty much, you know, the whole light tab is the seashore, which of course is national. So we wouldn't really think that it wouldn't be allowed there, at least for the time being. Residential district. And this one's not labeled like the other one. You know, we can get into that later again, what district or whatever. Let's move on to the next slide for now, because otherwise I'll just get caught up trying to explain that whole stuff again. Where each type of marijuana establishment are proposed. So we have the residential district. That's R. You're looking at the top, the bar there, that's darker. We have the... Come on, help me out, Paul. Each one of them. Then we have the North Truro 6A. Is that the limited business area?
Yeah, here Truro.
Then we have the Town Center.
Truro Center.
Truro Center. Then we have the North Truro...
Center.
Center. Route 6. Well, all the areas on Route 6, adjacent to Route 6, and then the Seashore District. So, most of these say "and", which means not allowed. So the only areas we're wondering about here, and this is on our proposal, are Route 6 by special permit every single section, every use. And for product manufacturer, Truro Center and North Truro Center. So that would be what the bylaw says at the moment. We have a couple of other items here on the next page. So, it's too bad they didn't offer them on page. But that's okay, because... So this is establishments and where they're proposed. So this continuing section is for third-party transporter only by special permit in the Route 6 District. Retailer, which would be, I imagine, medical or recreational use. That would be North Truro 6A.
That is not prohibited in this law.
Thank you. The Town, uh, Truro Center is a special permit. North Truro Center is a special permit. And all of Route 6 would be by special permit. Paul just indicated that there was a discrepancy on what was provided online. And so it's possible we have just a misprint for expression on there. But that's all under discussion.
If on marijuana...
I was talking about, okay. We didn't get to that yet. So, yeah. There's a couple of discrepancies in this particular slide. Let me read this.
Uh, yeah. North Truro Route 6, 6A.
Say what?
North Truro Route 6A. The original proposal is a "no".
Yeah, so that SP, it is "no" then.
An "and". Not allowed.
Right. And micro-business. Special permit in the residential.
Yes.
And then the residence, correct. So if those of you who are following home, there were a couple of glitches, but it's not major. Because the discussion on the special permitting and not allowed is part of tonight's discussion. And then, so that was micro-business. That's what I'm up to now. Micro-business was a special permit in the residential district. And also in Route 6. Okay. And then craft marijuana would be by special permit in the residential district. And also in the Route 6 District. Okay. Are we up to the number? Let's try the next slide. If anyone's confused about that, we can discuss that. Anyone's confused about the use table, even though there were a couple there. If you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone. Have no fear. We love to hear from people.
Someone typed, gee, I'm looking to... Just, I thought, um, as far as Truro Center, like, you can't be within 500 feet of a park. Is that not true?
The R idea is, this one, is the microphone.
There is some language proposed in the bylaw with respect to buffers. And right now it does include playgrounds. This is something that is, again, open for discussion tonight. The only state regulation that's in place with respect to buffers is 500 feet of school. Anything else that Town imposes is sort of a determination to be made.
So, or a park that children might be in, there could be a buffer zone for that?
There could be a buffer zone imposed by the bylaw and legally have a buffer proposed in here that includes those types of uses. But I think we'll get to further slides and see if there is. There's that up for discussion.
Yeah, this is, that's why, this will be discussed. Are we on slide number two?
Yep.
Number of each type of establishment allowed. So the Ad hoc Committee, which helped write this first draft, and decided one of each. One cultivator, one medical treatment center. It says cultivation only. One product manufacturer, one independent testing lab, one research facility, one third-party transporter, retailer of adult-use recreational. Anyone not understand that it would be determined by the number of alcohol retail licenses issued by the Town of Truro. Believe that number, we bandied that number about a bit. Some people say five, some people say six. Some of them are seasonal. And we don't have, I haven't gotten a clear answer as to whether a seasonal alcohol license would count for a year-round marijuana retail store. Maybe you want to answer that one? Maybe you want to answer that one? Is that a tough one?
That is a tough one.
I think, yeah, that's gonna just... You might give it a shot. It's not crazy.
The language in the statutes, basically, um, for... If you're going to limit the number of retail establishments, there's a threshold imposed in the language of the Act that says if you go below twenty percent of your Chapter 138, Section 15 licenses, then you're going to need a ballot question in order to have a limit that goes below twenty percent. If you cap the retail licenses to twenty percent or higher, you can impose that limitation without additionally going to the ballot. The question is, what is a 138, Section 15 license? The language of the Act is not clear with respect to whether or not the seasonal licenses are included in there. They are governed by a different section of the alcoholic beverages statute language, although there is reference in that section to 138-15. So there's sort of an open question right now as to whether or not the seasonal licenses need to be included in that cap. Out of an abundance of caution, we recommend that that be part of the twenty percent calculation.
I heard almost nothing of what you said. I, maybe I'm old, but it's a bit of a problem.
Okay, I can try and say that, because I don't understand the lingo either, but I would say that the number of retails in this town would either be one or two. That's basically... If we wanted to absolutely limit it to one, we might have to make a ballot question to hold it down to one. That's essentially what we're saying. Is that correct? So the United Route Six Retail Marijuana Stores, it very possibly could be one, and a maximum of two. You don't look satisfied with the answer, but that's essentially where it's at. Micro businesses would be limited to one. One second. Craft cooperative, we would allow one. A retailer for medical marijuana would be one. That could be incorporated with the same establishment as the recreation, possibly. Okay, um, how many more slides do we have? Let me see.
Six more.
Six more. Is it that you want to say something about what we just covered?
This is a question.
Coming to the microphone.
Joey Barton, Truro. Uh, this is a very, very quick question. Twenty percent of Truro alcohol retail licenses. So does that mean theoretically, if there were one hundred alcohol licenses in Truro, twenty percent would be twenty. Does that mean that there are only eighty alcohol licenses left? Or total marijuana and alcohol together is a hundred and twenty?
Okay, I get what you're saying. The percentages of how, whatever number of actual retail alcohol establishments there are. We have, if you want to add, you can do it on my hand.
No, no, it wasn't that. The question is, are marijuana licenses added to the existing alcohol licenses? Or subtracted from that total?
No, it is, it is a percentage of the number that exists. So if there are ten, uh, retail alcohol licenses, ten. Twenty percent of that would be two. So there would only allow two retail.
Leaving just eight alcohol licenses?
No, 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 nothing just, Jim, it's just, it's just...
Okay, so then you have twenty, then you have twelve licenses, marijuana plus alcohol.
Different kinds of licenses.
But there are different kinds of licenses. I got it.
I get it. I understand that that's confusing. That's why, you know, I spent some time with you. It's okay. We're up to number three. Is that correct?
Yep.
Required distance from schools and possibly other institutions. Not within five hundred feet of schools. Childcare center, public park, playground, indoor or outdoor recreation area for children. Children's camp, public library, or an existing place of worship. So is that concern up there also?
Yep.
So this is part of what was in the draft. And it might be a little bit too expansive, because the way the zoning or the use table is to describe now, that would eliminate all establishments from operating in Truro. If we eliminate all of the establishments from operating in Truro, we might have reached the threshold of that other condition, which would be making it unreasonably impractical for any of them to establish themselves. So, we're trying to use common sense. Not endanger children. I'm going to go to number four. Space allowed for cultivation, total square footage, total number of parcels. Total square footage for the cannabis. Remember, that's actually looking down at the plants and seeing how much area they cover. Clearly defined also. Maximum of five thousand square feet in the residential district. And only applies to craft marijuana cultivation cooperatives growing in the residential district. Our total number of parcels as of right now is undetermined, but I guarantee it's not over ten at the moment. Structures under five, including size and square feet, height, material, and greenhouses. Bear in mind that these points that are in this slide are also guided by what the Cannabis Commission has already written down. So if you feel that something is left out, you have to add what is here to the Cannabis Commission's guides, because it is pretty restricted. Sometimes I have to say that. Anyway. Use of mobile vehicle or movable structure. Anything like a trailer, a van, or a truck for a marijuana transporter only. Remember, they would be licensed by the Cannabis Commission. So, may not be that simple to drive marijuana around. Or, possibly you have another opinion about that. Located inside building containing residential units, including transient houses. Uh, for example, hotels and motels. So you're not going to be growing inside residential units that include transient housing. No growing in hotels, motels. Next slide. Resource impact and plan, water, power, and waste. This is required by the applicants to provide a plan, a use plan. So, the town and the planning board and the Cannabis, I think the Cannabis Commission also would use this, but I'm not positive about that. But electrical use, energy demand, um, also ventilation systems for air quality, especially exhaust. Proposed water systems for water usage. And also, and it just continues on to waste. It doesn't, but there are strict rules already established by the Cannabis Control Commission for the waste that it has to be reduced to a... Anyone from there can help me? It can't have any, uh...
Unusable.
Say that again?
It has to be neutralized.
Neutralized at this time. So you can't just go around getting scraps. Who wants to cultivate in Truro? One craft marijuana cultivation cooperative has expressed interest in locating in Truro and has proposed and agreed to the following changes to the ad hoc draft bylaw to enable cultivation operations. They've agreed to extensive site review. Restriction on lot coverage for greenhouses and hoop houses. Special permit for the ZPA. Minimum lot sizes of 1.5 acres. One-story buildings with a harmonious appearance in keeping with the neighborhood. Gradually world out of size and canopy. Limitation to two licenses, each licensee will be authorized to cultivate a hundred thousand square feet of canopy. Cultivation in the residential district, North Truro 6A, and the 6A districts. Two movable containers, shipping containers, or the like, permitted per parcel. Use of residents for processing, manufacturing in residential districts. That is the completion of the slides. So we see it's simple. Just a few items to deal with. That's the point. It never seemed like it was difficult when it was yes or no, I'm okay with legalizing marijuana. But when confronted with what, um, we're actually dealing with, we look at it as, there's quite a few aspects. Those were what the planning board has come up with, as important points. And I want to invite people to speak to us about their feelings. Possibly they have, uh... I know I have another piece of paper here. Just a second.
I think we have inconsistency in this slide.
You do?
Yes. On the last slide you suggested you would have two cultivators of a hundred thousand square feet.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
But in the earliest slide, everyone in the crowd...
You're not in the microphone. The problem we have is that if you speak from there, and I want you to be heard, but if someone watches this on the television, they can't understand what you're saying. Have no fear, use the microphone, and we want to hear what you're saying. And I understand exactly what you're bringing up. Please bring it up on the microphone.
No, well, one is one. It's not two. If you look at the slide earlier.
Yes, I understand, yeah.
Every one was one, except retail, we could possibly have two if we have more licorants. And in this last slide.
The last slide.
It says, limited to two licenses, each license authorized to cultivate a hundred thousand square feet. That's in, that's not in compliance with an earlier slide.
Retail cultivation.
I have to, don't, don't yell out from the audience, because it only makes it more confusing. What was proposed by the planning board is one thing. This last slide is what the craft cooperative wants. So it's not the same exact thing. This is, this is what they would want.
So this is two different opinions?
Yes. And we're probably going to be admitting opinions tonight. That's why we have a public hearing. And I am only going to agree with you or accept your opinion.
Well, I don't, I'm just, I was confused by two versus one.
Well, by our draft. Our draft has one. And the craft cooperative would like it to say two. That's...
Mr. Chairman.
Pretty much what it is. This one.
May I make a correction?
To what?
Uh, this proposed bylaw is not a product of the planning board. This proposed bylaw is a product of the ad hoc committee. Uh, the planning board has never had a discussion on this, and it has never been an agenda item on any of our agendas. So, we, according to Chapter 48, Section 5, we have to, and I'll quote it. "No zoning ordinance or bylaw or amendment shall be adopted until after the planning board has held a public hearing at which interested persons shall be given an opportunity to be heard." But this group as a board has never discussed this. This came to us directly from the ad hoc committee. And I do not know if this board has the legal right to amend this bylaw that has come to us from the selectmen.
Would you please? Thank you. I think you might have, a second.
Rayanne Homer, Town Manager. I will defer the legal question to Town Council. However, I will remind the group that the ad hoc committee consisted of two board of selectmen members, three planning board members, and staff that developed this at the request of the... And Ms. Lockman, you would respond to the legal question?
So, um, there is authority for the planning board to make changes to this draft. That's the point of the public hearing. Ultimately, at the end of the public hearing, once they close the public hearing, they have the ability to consider changes that they would like to vote and recommend back to the, to the planning board. And the version that may go on the warrant could include the language that the planning board has recommended. Or it can be recommended as a change to the draft bylaw as an amendment on the floor of town. If, if the bylaw had been accepted already and put on the warrant in the form it was. However, since the warrant is not closed, there is the opportunity for the planning board to make those changes and those recommendations at this point in time.
Thank you. So I'll clarify. The planning board has worked on this. Some planning board members have not worked on this. But the planning board has worked on this particular bylaw and is trying to come to a compromise that takes the town, protects the farms, protects the residences, and still provides for what the town voted, which is to legalize the rest of the recreational use of marijuana. So, now, we have some items to discuss. So, is this the right, uh, this doesn't even look like the right thing.
Could you, could anyone speak up a little? My mic is in trouble.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the microphone. You're up. Most of my papers.
It's basically the last.
Oh, yeah. Yes, so, the terms that the board would like to hear about from the audience would be, craft marijuana co-ops would be limited to two in Truro. Micro businesses would be limited to two in Truro. Any type of marijuana establishment, for example, product manufacturing, other non-co-op cultivation establishments, medical marijuana treatment center, third-party transporter, research lab, or testing facility would be limited to one license in each category. And each license would be limited to a specific location. And each license would be limited to a specific location. I have a feeling, and I sense that there's a lot of confusion already, so... Because I don't see people comprehending what's going on. Sure.
I know I'm speaking for myself, but I'm not sure what it is you're presenting us. You're presenting what the cultivators would like, and you're presenting a draft of the ad hoc. The first part was the ad hoc, correct? And then these questions at the end were what the craft people want.
Yes.
So, now, do you want us to discuss each one of what the craft people want?
Yes, we would like to discuss it in that form.
Okay.
To see whether the town, the people present here
Right.
have an interest in some minor changes in our language to ease the permitting for the craft cooperative.
Okay, well, that's where it gets confusing. Maybe we should go over each one of these and get response from the people here.
Sure.
And I, I would just say, while I'm up here, that as I understand this here, with two licenses, that means you're now talking about 200,000 square feet in Truro rather than 100,000. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, I would rather it be one.
Sean Piper, Truro resident and voter. I have a question among many questions, but for now, there's one point there. It says one-story buildings with harmonious appearance in keeping with the neighborhood. I don't know if I'm correct or not, but I did hear from one person on the planning board that if one of these businesses is growing marijuana, they must have an eight-foot fence. Is that true?
Fencing is required for security reasons. Fencing has not actually been completely discussed as far as what it will look like. Fencing can be put in and it can be screened with growing shrubbery to hide it, things like that. But I agree, we, there is required fencing for outdoor use, for outdoor growing. If the growing is done in a space that is able to be secured, then you don't need a fence. As far as I understand, maybe not exactly where I'm on that. But if you're going to grow it out in the open air, it needs to have a security fence around it.
So, just my reaction to that is how does that make harmonious appearance in terms of what we're generally accustomed to in Truro? I mean, I would want to live next to a farm that has an eight-foot fence around the whole growing area. So, that's just my reaction to that appearance business.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Drake Cook, Shore Road, Truro voter.
Truro voter.
Um, the farms usually have a fence around the growing area just because we need to keep the deer out of the areas. We need to keep rabbits out. We can keep just about anything that's running around in the woods out of the garden. So, we have fences already around a lot of our gardens.
Okay, thank you. Can you pull the microphone right out of that?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that?
Right in there.
Okay, I'll stop. You're on. I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure whether they line up with your points up there. But I understood from the previous meeting that among the state department's security system that it's set to alarm the police department. Is that correct?
Drake, could you nod your head if that's correct?
Yes. Okay. Has anyone done a study of how that would affect policing needs going into the future? Are we, where will that would affect budget issues, et cetera?
I don't have a study to hand you on that. I can't imagine what the actual effect is going to be. Apparently, that is a requirement of the security devices is that they automatically notify the police department. It may or may not require a policeman to go to the site. It may require, I'm not sure what the actual...
So, we don't know if they're requiring?
With that in mind, that would be required.
We know that...
It's not in the bylaw as much as that it's in the Cannabis Commission, so...
We know that it's required.
Yes.
We don't know what effect that would have on our policing.
Right, we don't know what the effect would have.
Uh, do we, um... Do we know what sort of water requirements, 200,000 square feet of canopy would require?
I saw some data. I don't have it on me, but I did see some data that someone sent me.
Mr. Chairman?
Peter has some calculations.
I have some calculations on water power use that I'm sure will be contested by the growers.
Peter, you have to talk.
Is this thing working?
Yes. Now it is.
Um, the state of California has a very serious problem in the areas where there's a lot of black market marijuana growing up in the area of the county, et cetera, because their rivers are drained by the water diversion. Um, and they, and they calculate, they actually determine how many people are growing marijuana in the hills by measuring the height of the rivers at their mouth. Um, they figure six gallons of water per day per plant. Now, this is surface water diversion for outside farms. And there are much more efficient ways of growing. I, I want to say that because it's only fair. Um, they figure 400 plants per acre. That's 1,000 gallons per plant over a 180-degree season. That is 432,000 gallons per acre over a 180-degree, 180-day season. That is 1.33 acre-feet of water. Um, I also have calculations for indoor cultivation. Indoor cultivation, greenhouse plants require twice the water used outside cultivation. Um, and these are the numbers I have from the web that I did a lot of, many hours of research and they seem to be pretty characteristic. Indoor cultivation uses three to five gallons per day per kilowatt of light used, not per plant. A kilowatt of light, you know, all these plants indoors, they all have grow lights. And during the vegetative stage, the plants that are on for 18 or 20 hours a day. So, it's very, very intense metabolism in the plants anyway. One kilowatt of light for 25 square feet. What this means is that an acre of canopy inside ground would require 1,742 kilowatts per acre. And would require 8,700 gallons per day, which is 3 million gallons per year. And of course, we grow inside and draw water out of the water table all year long. Um, this is 9.6 acre-feet, which is more than three times as much raining as we get up here. So, completely insupportable. Large inside growing fields are completely insupportable on our water table. Um, the average home uses 300 gallons per day. Um, so, this is 29 times the use of the average home. Um, now, an acre of canopy employs 1,742 kilowatts per acre. This is 15 million kilowatt-hours per year. This is power use of at least, and this is a low estimate, 1,062 average homes. Which means that an acre of indoor canopy is the same as building another 1,000 homes in terms of power usage. This will require upgrading in our infrastructure for power distribution. As you know, our power company is two guys in Hyannis with the dry cell. Um, and being that it's a utility, they will simply increase their rates for everybody in order to pay for it. Thank you.
So, I guess you're, you're in favor of this.
200,000 square feet of canopy. We're talking about inside farms? We're talking about 200,000 square feet of building? Or are we talking about outside farms?
The buildings have to be bigger than the canopy.
All, all of the, all of that is included. Some of them you grow on the...
The buildings have to be bigger than the canopy, so they'll be larger than the canopy.
And...
Unless it costs here, they're done in shelves.
And the two movable containers, the shipping container is permitted per parcel. It doesn't include the sort of factory-like metal buildings, or does that? And is that the only building that's allowed on a parcel? Are those two shipping containers?
No, that was, this is in early stages of the situation. And so, we don't imagine that the craft cooperative is going to be buying buildings right away. And one of the least expensive ways to get a secure site for curing the product would be to use a shipping container, which is easily secure. It may not be the most beautiful thing.
No, I understand, but we're, so we're allowing just, they're asking, the craft cooperative is asking for just two containers per parcel. Is that what?
That's what it says in our...
Okay. And how large is the smallest parcel, do we know?
1.5 acres is what, uh...
Okay, so, we're not talking about 10 shipping containers on 1.5 acres?
No, we're not.
How do we achieve 200,000 square feet of canopy? And is it from shelves?
There are more parcels. There are parcels. Not all of them are 1.5 acres. One of the parcels is larger, much larger.
Okay, but we're only putting two parcels, no matter what size the parcel is, we're only putting two containers on?
That is the proposal.
That's the proposal.
We're not thinking that the, I'll let go of you, that this is going to start in the fashion of 30 shipping containers all of a sudden appearing. This is going to supposedly start in a small way.
Okay, but, I mean, it's starting with two containers.
Yes.
But ultimately, there may need more.
It's a possibility, but it would require us to decide if we put it in the bylaw, they cannot put more on their property. This is, this is the town trying to sculpt a bylaw that is a compromise.
That is not overly restrictive to the point where it puts our building to pass the law at all. I got that. But the two movable containers is only for now. It's only for the beginning rollout. It might be more later.
Or, or it might be enough. Or it might actually be enough. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know how much work can be done in a shipping container.
So, we don't know the, we don't know the actual answer to that question.
But we don't know what the actual future of this business is. It's not a simple answer. The possibilities of it not being successful are actually greater than it being successful. It is not a business that has not been established in other areas. So, there are real, uh, established marijuana cultivators. And this group wants to try to come in and try to be a small craft co...
Totally get that, but I'm just having a problem like from 200,000 square feet canopy to two shipping containers per parcel. That's where I'm finding there's, there seems to be sort of a pretty wide spread between one and the other.
I believe that the business, part of the cannabis is, once the plants are grown, when they are harvested, that they have to be held to dry. And that's where the shipping container would be used, for them to put them in there to dry.
So, the rest of the 200,000 square feet is outside growing?
I can't say that everything will be growing and drying at the same time. I think it's a process where you grow something, harvest it, and that field is now left without something growing.
So, then you bring the container in for, as a, as a temporary?
It's possible it's temporary, but it might have future uses in the, in the product. Because after things are dried, then there's more work to be done. I can get one of the cooperative members to talk about all the processes that they intend to do without the, uh, the danger of it becoming moldy due to the weather. That would ruin the product, as I understand that. Listen to the, uh...
I'm just, I'm still not finding the...
Is it that you feel 200,000 feet is not going to fit into two shipping containers? Is that...
Well, obviously, we have more parcels, but we're only allowing two containers per, at least per tiny thing. But we don't know how long that is, and we don't know how many parcels there are. And we don't know how many hundred, how many...
We do know, we do know that we start, that's what we're trying to know where this starts. That's what we're trying to know by the bylaw. That they will be limited to two shipping containers on a parcel. If they can't come in and start growing marijuana in 30 shipping containers, which would allow them to grow here and inside a shipping container, which would be securable, heatable, and everything like that, which isn't exactly farming in my mind. So, if they're going to grow in a greenhouse and they're going to grow out on ground, that's a big difference. I don't, I think that you understand that we're interested in trying to work with a group that is Truro's.
I'm not arguing any particular point of view. I'm just trying to figure out, because it seems to me there's a pretty big discrepancy between the one and the other. I'm trying to figure out what we're really talking about.
Well, this, this board would like to start with a limit on the canopy size. I'd not say 200,000 feet. I'd not say anything larger than that. Those sizes are based on tiers. And it's, I think there's nine or 12 tiers. Eleven, 11 different tier sizes. The smallest is 5,000 square feet. That would be where we start. We're only going to start at the smallest tier. It's possible because they are a lot of, that they would be able to use a larger tier and call all...